All right, moving right along. Well, now at the approval of the minutes, board members. So we have the minutes from March the 2nd, work session, March the 9th, business meeting, March the 10th, community meeting, and March 19th, budget work. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes en masse?
Actually, I have one minor change I'd like to make. On the March 2nd, on page 5, under the discussion on the PR position, there's a paragraph that says Jeff Phillips stated that, you know, the board received a book from one of our competitors. To be more accurate, it's an annual report, not a book, from one of our competitors.
All right, Ms. Monroe, do you have that? Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to now approve all of the minutes in one shot?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
Dr. Phillips and Tim, or David Harrison. All right. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. That's seven zero. Thank you, folks. All right. Just a couple comments. We're coming up towards the end of school, and I know our students are really preparing for the end. They've just entered into their last nine weeks, and so I encourage them to keep their eyes on the, on the focus on the ball and what the end is in store for them. We're really excited about this school year and how it's come together. Also, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Lauder to our first business meeting. We feel his presence already, and we're really appreciative of him coming onboard and lending us his wisdom and discernment, and we expect great things from you. Thank you, Dr. Lauder. And I'll turn it over to you for the real comments.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. I appreciate that. I just wanted to start off, I think he just stepped out, but I wanted to start off and say how much we appreciate Dr. Shepherd and his years of service to Cabarrus County schools, and also just personally to thank him for how gracious he's been in the transition to try to make it as smooth as possible. So I know he's just stepped out, but I want to say to him how much we appreciate that. The second thing I wanted to do was to, just to say thanks to everyone that's in the last week or so, as we've, as I've started, that have reached out to wish me well. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and what a difference it makes to be able to continue working with the great people of Cabarrus County. I also want to say a big thank you to the school board for giving me the opportunity. So, so thank you. Next, I'd like to say an official welcome to two of our new team members. Lynn Reimer, who is going to be our new Assistant Superintendent of Operations, and she's sitting right down front, and also to Tim Lauder, who is our new Executive Director of Operations. Both of them are great additions to our team, great additions to our county, and I appreciate both of them joining the team and being here with us tonight. So thank you and welcome to our school system. And last, I'd just like to say that over the past couple weeks, a lot of people have asked me, the question I've gotten more than anything else is, you know, what's your vision for Cabarrus County schools? What's the vision? And I think there are lots of visions because there are so many different components of a, of a large organization and making, making that work. And one of the things, I guess I wanted to say in this format, is that the vision and the expectation that I have, and I know our board members too, is that seven school board members and the superintendent all try to keep students at the forefront of our decisions with everything that we do. We're not always going to agree, and we're going to work on things that are very difficult and part of the community, but if students are the number one thing that we're looking at whenever we make decisions, we'll, we'll come out on the right side. I also want to say a, a big thank you to several of our county employees, county commissioners, and our county manager and our assistant manager, who have, again, made lots of, an outpouring of welcoming and trying to say that they want to have a positive relationship with, with our school board and with our school system, and just want to say what a difference that makes and how much we appreciate. So again, the vision is that, you know, we're going to be working on a lot of things over the next years that are not necessarily easy things, but we have professional people that are trying to, to do the best thing for our students and our community with our board and their board, and, and our county manager and our assistant manager will get a long way, will go a long way. So again, we just want to say thank you, and again, it's part of that vision is that we continue to work together, and they couldn't have been any more gracious in how they, how we've started this. So thank you to, to everyone and to everybody, and look forward to moving our school system forward.
Thank you, Dr. Lauder. It's a pleasure to have you onboard. We have guest speakers. We have a guest speaker tonight, and our guest speakers address the board. They, guest speakers can be scheduled on the agenda of the board's business meeting by calling the board clerk at 704-262-6238, and they must call by 12 noon on the Friday prior to our business meeting. Individuals addressing the board may speak for three minutes, and persons representing a group may speak for five minutes. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in addressing the board and also for their cooperation in presenting information within the timeframe allotted. The following guest speaker has requested to address the board at this time, Mr. Gene Overcash. Well, Mr. Overcash is not here tonight, so I'm sorry we weren't able to hear from him, but we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and that is the approval of the consent agenda. Board members, I know you've had time to look through it. Are there, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
David Harrison and Rob Harrison. I mean, Rob, Rob, Tim Fur. Oh, yeah. Tim Fur. I have to admit, Tim is very rare to be that quick on the gun, but he was there tonight. All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right. Motion carries, Ms. Monroe, seven zero. All right. We're moving on to the action agenda, and that means Mrs. Kelly Klutz needs to come on down and give us some information on this final attempt to get our budget through, right?
Yes, sir. Good evening. So this afternoon is the day that we expect to adopt our proposed budget, and so that means it'll be the budget that we present to our county commissioners to make a request for funding. In, in doing so, the first thing that I would like to do is go over the items that were left that I needed to address with you from the last meeting. So those are the items that I refer to as our follow-up questions, and I posted those on board docs for you, and so I'm just going to review those. And I think Ed is pulling those up for you, and we'll just get started with those. So one of the things that, that you had asked me to follow up on was you wanted to know what the county was giving their employees as a salary increase in their budget for this coming budget year. And so what we learned was that they were going to give a, they were planning to give a half a percent merit, cost of living increase, and in addition, they were going to have a max of a two and a half percent merit for their employees. And so then you instructed me to go back and see how they budgeted that max of two and a half percent. And so what I found is that they budget an average of a one and a half percent, which is what their evaluations are historically. So if you take that information, so if they, they average, they budget one and a half percent for merit, and they have a half a percent for cost of living, on average, their employees would expect to get a 2% pay increase in this coming budget year. Okay? So what we built our budget on when we presented it to you was a one and a half percent for our, our staff and our, we did a, we did, originally, we did 1% and 10% for our certified staff. Then the board made a motion and did one and a half percent and 15%, but you also indicated that you didn't want to do anything except for what the county, anything less than what the county did. So with that information, I would expect that you would want to do 2% and 20%. Is that, is that the direction of the board based on that information?
Would we need a motion to do that, Sarah?
We're going to-
To change the budget, since we're changing the way the budget's been written at this point?
We're going to adopt the proposed budget at the end. It could come all at the end if, if you wanted it to.
I think that makes sense, to bring it all at the end, so when she presents the proposed budget at that time, similar to how you adopt when you're approving minutes, with the revision and then vote on the budget as revised.
All right, board members, which, what she does need is a consensus that, that this new number that she's come up with as a result of investigating with the county, are you, are you happy with that? And if it is, and when we do the final budget, then we'll include the 2% in there rather than the 2% slash 20% instead of the one and a half percent slash 15%? Is, am I seeing some acknowledgement that that's what we want to do? Okay. Then going in that direction, go ahead and continue on.
Thank you. Another follow-up item that you had asked about was the status of Kannapolis City Schools project, because I know that there was some, wanting some correlation with the time that we opened our, our school and their school, and I talked with Will Crabtree. Basically, he said that they had selected an architect or in the planning process, but they were very early on in their development, and that's the, the information that he was able to provide for me. Another piece of follow-up information that we had was you were interested in certifications for employees for InfoSnap, and we provided that information. We gave you four attachments and posted it on board docs and sent that information to you. In addition, Matthew is here. If you had, if there were questions that were not able to be answered with those attachments, we can certainly ask him to come to the podium. Were there any questions that you weren't able to get from that information regarding InfoSnap? Okay. Okay. And the last follow-up item that I had here was we wanted some comparative data from other LEAs for the school psychologists. When I originally posted the, this document, I think we left out, it says rations, it's ratios. We left out, we left out the ratios, but we do have that available, and in addition, she provided all the other information for you, for, to, for your research. Were there other questions that you had related to this topic? Okay. All right. So with that, I did take the liberty of preparing the document with the 2% and the 20% for you with those totals, and I'm going to ask Ed to go ahead and pull that up for you so that you can see a summary of the budget request with that in there. Yes. So as a summary of our budget request, our, I understand there was, we wanted to know what our current year budget is. We're sitting at $52,634,688 from the county, and that's broken up into operating, and then there's an operating technology, and then operating building, and then operating grounds. And you can see where we are, what we're asking for, and then how much of that is an increase we're requesting. So we're asking for a 19% increase on our operating continuation and expansion. You see the 1.4 and the 6.4, those items. And then if you go down to technology, we're asking for the $2,030,000. That's a 54% increase that we're asking for. And then again, down to the building, we're asking for a 13.8% increase. And then down below grounds, we're asking for a 24.78% increase. Now, to put that in perspective just a little bit, we're going to go down the spreadsheet just a little bit further, and we're going to look at last year's budget versus request versus what we received. So you look at the amended budget was, and this is, I took this off of the budget documents that was presented to you last year at this time, was $48 million. We asked for an increase of $17 million. You see that 17,9 in those various categories. But the increase we received was $3.7 million in those various categories, and you can see where the increases were. We received 8.8% in the, the top category, operating, whether it was continuation and expansion. And then you have your budget there after the mediation, which ended up being our total So that just kind of puts it in perspective in where we were, what we asked for, what we received, and then what we're, where, where our budget is now and what we're asking for, and maybe you can get kind of a perspective of what you might receive going forward.
So can you both part for us, please, what the actual percentage of increase was after mediation?
For the-
Each of the items there?
We can do it real quick here.
Or just can email it to us, I can see it's significant, but-
Yeah. We can do it.
And I presume without adding the amount before?
Seven, seven and a half. Seven and a half percent.
Okay. Total, random. Thank you.
Sure. So, but the things that you, you need to know about that was to, over 2 million of that was the salary increase. So there were, part of that was the state match, and then the other part was the, the salary increase that they did over two years of time. So a lot of that was salary increase. Then the other part was charter schools, and so, you know, it, it is a lot of money, and it appears to be a lot of money, but there wasn't a lot of, we didn't get extra teachers, we didn't get instructional supplies, those kinds of things. It was, there was, the, the biggest portion of that was that salary increase, which was definitely needed and, and deserved, certainly our top priority. Okay?
Would you say the mediation was successful?
Oh, wow.
Can you characterize how successful? I mean, I'm just asking you to put it into your, your words. You know the big picture of everything, and open-ended kind of question about, about that process.
I would, I would say that it's not something that I would like to see us do again. I would, I would like to take different avenues to, to, to get to where we need to go. Okay. So, I also have, so that includes the 2% and 20%, and so I also summarized the, the capital for you. And of course, capital is non-recurring, it's one time, so I did it in a little bit different format. So this year, our capital outlay, non-facilities, the request is 1.87 million, and then our, our capital projects, the 38, the top 38 list is the 56 million there on the top. But then I wanted to show you last year and put you last year into perspective, and so the request for non-facilities maintenance, and these are the things like the buses and the, the forklifts, not the forklifts, the, the lifts for the buses and those kinds of things, that request was 2.8 million. We received $1,020,000. We requested capital projects greater than $500,000, $96 million, and we received 2 million. Now, that was the, the Odell piece, the 2 million toward the Odell through the mediation. And then the capital projects less than $500,000, we requested 20 million, and we received the 4.2 million, and that, those were the roofs that we received. Okay? All right. So are there other questions that we've not answered regarding the budget? Yes, ma'am?
Okay. One question that I have, and I didn't know, and I just received this through an email today, on the psychologist, our, and I'm, I don't know if you'd received this House Bill 380, where they, it's, it's called the statewide school safety management bill, where they talk about, down in the text, it talks about, it says that, it says that, it says that the funds shall be matched on the basis of dollar in state funds for every $1 in local funds and shall be used to supplement and not supplant state, local, federal funds for school psychologists, guidance counselors, and social workers. This is supposedly, this is section seven of this bill. Are you familiar with this?
I'm not. I'll have to research that.
And that's why I was wondering, because, you know, we're asking for, in our budget, we're asking for social workers, a, a big chunk, and I didn't know if we were going to look at this grant possibly for, possibly anything to do with this.
This, this is a new bill, and it hasn't been passed at this point. I asked Linda to forward it to the Safety Committee because there were a lot of safety components to this bill, but it is coming up, and I have a feeling that it might get passed. So our next budget cycle, we might be able to, to definitely talk about it in that.
Certainly. It sounds like I need to do some research and, and come back to-
Well, that's why I was wondering, because we got a big chunk that we're asking for, and that's why I was wondering. This, like I say, this just came across my desk, and when we're looking at almost $700,000 for social workers, and so I thought, well, I'm, I'm going to ask.
Let me make a note to check that out.
You know, if you will check that, I would appreciate that, because, like I said, I know it's quite a, a large chunk there, so when I saw that, that was the first thing that caught my eye, because if we can get a dollar per dollar match, that could definitely affect our budget. So that was, that was one of my, my big questions there, and so that was the one thing, because if it, it does come in this year, now, there was, on, if you read on down though, one of the things they do talk about though, if we've received funding for SROs, that could affect our eligibility too. It could knock us down, but still, if we could apply for that, that would be something we want to look at. So that was one of my questions. I think you've got a question, too. I'll let you. I'll pass it, pass it back to you.
Is it okay for me to?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't, we didn't put anything into the expansion budget that included teacher assistance, and I don't, it wasn't part of the discussion, and I'm sorry, Dr. Lauder, you have to forgive me. It's my first time through this process. I really didn't know it was over at, at, when the meeting stopped. I just thought they were going to have, continue, I guess, forever. But anyway, nothing was put in there about TA positions. Just wanted to make sure we had that discussion, is if we want to try to put something into the budget specifically for TAs, they've been cut and then cut again, I guess, maybe two years ago. And so just want to throw that out there and see, see what kind of response you guys, what you're thinking about TA positions or an increase from six to seven hours or whatever the case may be for teacher assistance. It wasn't part of the budget discussion, but it just wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda, and unfortunately, Carolyn and I did not bring it up or bury or whoever was there, I don't think.
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
Just as a little history, when I first got involved with the school system, and it was on that Budget Committee way back in the day, you know, it was five years ago, Ms. Klutz, can you believe that? That was when we had that big cut, and the state cut a tremendous amount of money out of TAs, and all of our state dollars for TAs got cut, and so we ended up losing, it was 100 TAs, but ended up being a net of about 70-some folks that we ended up riffing. And then they cut some more out of the budget again last year, was it last year or the year before?
It was last year, but we, we took care of that. So they did cut our funding, but we did not cut TAs.
Yeah, and in the past, Dr. Shepherd has given the principals the ability to do a two-for-one TA versus teachers if they were to hire teachers back. But that's, all the monies that we've had on TAs have been state dollars, not local dollars, and the difference between this request and the request from, what we've been dealt with in the past has been state dollars. We've never asked for local dollars to support TAs, and that's what this would be, a requirement for us to ask for local dollars to support teacher assistance. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. And I'll let you take it on from there. Or, Dr. Lauder, do you have to weigh in?
I would just say what Mr. Schumaker just mentioned is that principal input for that is something that we definitely, certainly that I would want, and we, that's the reason. I know Mr. Powell was joking earlier about bringing it up, but the reason that, that I would caution on that is because the principal input is not here to decide how they would want to, want to go there. Now, obviously, I was a high school principal and not, did not work at elementary school, and I know Mr. Powell did, but that aspect is, is something that I definitely would want the board to think about in, in all the decisions really, is what, you know, was the school represented, and if we're going to make a decision for money that, that could be used in a variety of ways, do we know what the, the schools and the principals' preference is on how to use that money?
Man, I, I would be open to, you know, we've got, in the expansion request, we've got increased elementary teacher allotment by 25. I would be open to saying, you know, that we would delegate to the principals, if, if this is, you know, funded, that we delegate to the principals, that, again, if they would rather have two TAs rather than an additional teacher, two, two and a half, that, that at their discretion, they know their, their schools needs more than, than we do, and I don't really want to dictate to them how they should staff it.
And that's what we've traditionally done, and it looks like Dr. Lauder's in agreement. I think we're all in agreement with that. That's-
Can we put that stipulation on that funding item, on this expansion budget, if it gets to that point? Can we add that stipulation?
They always have that flexibility, correct?
They always have that flexibility. We can certainly, yes, we can.
Maybe if, what you present to the county commissioners, perhaps in the justification, you could-
Says that.
Say something that we will allow principals at their discretion to convert these positions into additional TA positions.
Sure. The, the only problem we've ever had before is we wouldn't want to riff a teacher to pull two, two and a halves, and so these would all be vacant positions, so we would be fine in that situation. So I can, I can update the justification document and the, the description to say that we could do either or.
Yep. That's for them.
Okay. So with, so with the two changes, going to 2% and 20%, and to make the, the description change to trade teacher for T, two and a half TAs, if the, at the prin, at the principal and the school improvement team discretion, correct? Okay? Because that's the way it's been in the past. School improvement team has been involved.
Yep.
Okay? All right. Are there any other questions or concerns?
One, one thing, and I had asked, and this, and it's kind of doing with the budget, but not, I had asked when y'all were talking about band uniforms.
Yes.
They had talked about cleaning.
Yes, ma'am.
And I asked about maybe putting out a RFP or something for, did y'all check on that?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. White is, Chris White is working on that for us. Yes, ma'am.
So, okay. I didn't know if anything was done on that, so they are working on something.
He is. He's working on it.
Oh, okay. So we don't know anything yet on that?
No, not yet.
All right. That was my question.
Any other questions for Ms. Klutz on the budget? Because at the end, we're going to have to have a motion to accept this budget as, all right?
It's not a question. I just wanted to clarify for the folks at home, in the, in the capital request, where it's like $56 million. It's like, that's a lot of money.
It is.
But what, what I want to clarify to everyone at home is that includes 34 million that we have already told the county that we need for the new, the replacement middle school in Mount Pleasant, and it also includes $4 million towards the project that we're going to talk about in a little bit, at Royal Oaks. So 38 million of that 56 million is basically for two big construction projects, and the rest is, is, is the other things that need to be done.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Is there, do, do any of you have any more responses to our budget that we're going to send up to the commissioners? Is any more discussion on this? All right. Now I need to entertain the motion.
Go over the process one more time. So we, we approve this budget, it goes to the county commission, what happens from there.
So you'll approve the, the proposed budget or the, the request for funds, we'll submit this request for funds to the county. The county will approve their, our funding by June 30th. We'll know that by June 30th. We'll wait on the, the state funding, you know, not sure when we'll, you know, do- We'll wait on the, the state funding, you know, not sure when we'll, you know, generally June, July, we'll know our state funding. We'll pull those two sources together, then I'll come back to you with the funding and then we'll go down the list so of our priorities in the, in the categories, the funding category. So in maintenance, we'll have the list and we'll go down that list and the operations and the continuation will go down that list as far as the money goes.
Okay, so the commissioners don't have a line item, yes, this project is good, they don't have that, they said, they will set a certain amount for different categories or how's that?
So for operating, they do not approve the budget by line item, but by capital, they may.
By capital they may, so that list of 30 something projects?
By 30, the list of 38, they may say, I will, I'll choose this project and I'll choose number one and I'll choose number 10 and I'll choose number 16. And then that's the way that we'll fund, you know, we'll do. But with the operating, they give us money and we go down the list.
So all that is in one bucket, the current, local current?
Normally, except for in our situation. In Cabarrus County, they allocate the, the maintenance money separately and the grounds money separately and the technology money separately. So when they allocate those, we spend it on what we've told them we're going to spend on.
Okay, I do appreciate you breaking it out and showing us what the actual totals were.
If I may please, we've bandied about a lot of different costs for the Mount Pleasant facility. Can you help me focus one more time about that 56, I'm sorry, 50, with that large amount that's in there? And what dollar figure are we projecting as of right now would be required for the Mount Pleasant facility? And I'm just asking because we seem to have had a range of discussions.
We're at total project cost 36,602 is the total project cost.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this particular budget request was assuming that we were going to begin the construction of Mount Pleasant Middle School during the next year and you see that it says 34 million, it means that part of it will overflow into the following year or into this year. So this is a, this is what we're going to spend in 2015, 16 snapshot, not the whole project. So it does, doesn't look like it equals, but it really does.
Right, thank you for explaining that. I didn't even think about that, yes. The, some of the furniture and, and those type things are in a, in a following year. Thank you.
Yeah, part of this process was to present them with, here's your cash flow need for 15, 16. Then next year, we'll give them cash flow needs for 16, 17. But the projects still are what the projects are.
Right.
Does that make sense?
But you're asking for the 34 and not the 34 minus the 13 that was already allocated?
That's a difficult one. The county has only $2 million specifically set aside on my books for Mount Pleasant. So not the, the other. So it's, it's in an account, but so it's hard to, hard to truly identify that 13 million. So until I'm sure about it, we're just going to go with the, the $2 million.
Basically, sorry, 2 million is all we've been authorized to spend at this point.
Right, 2 million, exactly.
And that's going towards the architecture and engineering fees.
Yes. The other's been set in a separate account, but we, exactly like Mr. Phillips said, it's not, we've not been authorized to spend it yet.
But are we factoring in inflation because we know that inflation is nipping at our heels as, as we are waiting to ramp up to actually do these projects? Have we factored in the inflation of construction costs for these phased-out approaches?
The 36 million was a more, was within the last several months that that number came to us and that would have included the inflation for the project at the time.
Yeah, that includes inflation up to now.
Right.
But we haven't gone to the future, that's another, that's another discussion item with the commissioners, but they are aware that building construction costs have been inflating at a rapid rate.
And I know we can only look so far in the future.
Right, and so we're not going to deal with that, we'll just deal with this dollar and not, because that gets everything confused because then everybody wants to know if you're dealing with inflated dollars or real dollars or pie in the sky dollars. Board members, I need a motion to, to accept the proposed budget?
I have one more question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Again, first time going through this. Let's say some stuff gets funded as part of the expansion budget. We buy three more trucks for 150,000. Does that 150,000 then go into the recurring budget the next year or is that pulled out as a one-time, one-time expenditure and our budget essentially stays the same for the next year minus the 150? Does that question make sense?
It does. So we, we don't normally put one-time expenditures in a reoccurring budget. So I would, the example that you use would be, so the trucks would go in a maintenance budget. And so if we bought those, so normally we buy trucks in a capital budget and capital's one time and then we would ask for it again the next year and we would use it for something else. But we do ask for trucks in the maintenance budget. And so then that would just be back available money into the maintenance budget and so that would be freed up for maintenance, but it's for maintenance.
So any, anything from certain budgets, no matter what it is that's funded, becomes recurring expenses, whether it is a recurring expense by nature or just because we put it in that category, it becomes a recurring part of the budget? Is that what I'm hearing?
So if we ask for money?
I'm not suggesting going and adding a bunch of things to the recurring budget and, you know, make them, but I'm just asking for clarification.
So the way that our, the way that our, our funding categories are, they're designed so that you're not asking for non, you're asking for reoccurring things in the reoccurring budget and you're asking for non-reoccurring things in the non-reoccurring budget. And that's why I think it's so hard for us to understand why we have so many pots and why we, why I pay for them out of the different pots is because they're designed that way.
But just as a clarification, on the capital side, capital projects, non-facilities, maintenance department, that budget is basically, that line item is created every year.
Every year.
And it starts from zero and works its way up to whatever we decide is the cutoff for it.
Yeah, we're never buying the same thing. You know, you're, you're analyzing and reviewing it every year. I mean, you could buy bus, you could buy 10 buses every year, that doesn't mean you're going to, you're going to review and discuss that every year.
Yeah, and you, last year, we were talking about our maintenance budget, Vince, and, and the rule of thumb for a maintenance budget, and Tim, you can chime in on this, but generally the industry standard is 2% of the asset value is, or the value of your building is usually what you would spend on a yearly basis for maintenance, which means that a billion dollars, which is the last time, the last number that I heard, I don't know what we've inflated to now, that means we would have a maintenance budget every year of about $20 million. Well, Tim, Chuck, Dave's not in here right now, but, oh yeah, there you are. Yeah, they know that we don't have $20 million a year coming into our budget. We've been around 6.8 million, about 68 cents on the, or, you know, 0.68% rather than 2%. So.
There you go.
I just want to make sure that got back out. Any more questions? Mr. Harrison?
So just a, you know, question for the audience. We vote on this and then what do you do?
We wait. We wait for the county to approve their budget and we wait for the state to approve their budget and then we come back to you.
Okay. Are you negotiating with the state or the county in the meantime or just waiting for them to? What, what, what is your active role? What is the system's active role with those funding sources?
So I would say, I'm not sure if the, the word is negotiating, but we are talking with the county and discussing our needs and our budget presentation. And then when we hear of legislation or bills or anything going on at the state level, we have a legislative webinar every week that we listen to to make sure that we're aware of what's going on at the state level and if anything piques our interest that we know that we need to get involved in, then we, we get you guys involved or we, we talk to our people in Raleigh to make sure that there's nothing that's going to hit our budget that's going to be surprising to us. But yes, we're, we are active in, in this budget.
Thank you a lot. Thank you and your staff for all your work and all the parties involved in this stuff.
And this is just the local budget. So like the mandate or the legislation that deals with the driver's ed is state level and that's, you know, 500 and some thousand dollars that if we don't get it approved, then we would go to the county and ask them to help us out with that $500,000 shortfall. But if they don't help us out with that $500,000 shortfall, we will just go to the, go to the well and find out what we can draw up. So Kelly will have some, some way to pay for it and that means it probably less books for our students, less, less other opportunities for our students. That's, that's what it means.
One last question. Last year, I think you broke out the charter school allocation. Is that, where is that in here?
I did not because we have seen, we have seen our big increases over the last couple of years and I'm not expecting a significant increase. So those were just, just big jumps. So I, I did not allocate that separately.
I thought those schools were like adding an additional grade every year, wouldn't that?
They do, but we're also seeing a decline. They're coming back to us and so we're seeing kind of an offset in what's going and what's coming because you're not seeing just a, a, a whole new school add. You're seeing grade levels and you're seeing a decline come back, so.
Okay, so if we saw another new school come in, you would add it back?
Right. Because, yeah.
And one of the things that did come out of mediation was an agreement that the county, finally recognized what charter school, school students are. They're public school students and they realized that they needed to count them the same way as they'd count Cabarrus County school students. So now that, now that they do everything around that total charter school plus Cabarrus County schools, it's, it's a much better fit. Whereas before they were, they were trying to dice it up a little bit and didn't understand the concept. All right, do I have a, a motions? Boy, it's hard to get you guys to commit.
I'll, I, I move that we adopt the motion as amended by our discussions to include the 2% and 20% increase in pay and the.
TA flexibility.
Teacher assistant flexibility on the elementary school teacher increase in allocations.
All right. Tim Fur. He's hot, man. All right, any, any more discussion on this before we vote? Have we beat this one? All right, all in favor of passing the budget with the suggested amendments? Say aye. Aye. Oppose? Okay, so this budget's going to be moved on to the commissioners. Seven, zero, Ms. Monroe. And we will try to persuade them. Next on our agenda is an item that Ms. Carpenter asked that we bring, bring up tonight and that is the approval of the budget amendment. So Ms. Klutz, you bring that up for us?
Sure. Ms. Carpenter has spoke and I think she has her question resolved, so if there are any other questions, I'll certainly answer those at this time.
I would move for approval. I did discuss my question with her and she had answered my question, so I would move for approval of the budget amendment.
Second. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries, seven, zero, Ms. Monroe. All right, now we'll move on to the Royal Oaks. Approval of Royal Oaks replacement facilities. Now, these are the design contracts, so there's a couple, probably a couple predecessors to actually making this final motion, which is on the design contract. One is we have to approve the, one of the four options that we had available to us, board members. And so I'll open the discussion. I believe, let me see what this one has here. Let me see. Dr. Phillips performed a presentation for us and I believe that's been brought up on the.
Why don't we let Dave speak first about what, he's got teed up for us and then I can chime in.
Okay.
Certainly, it's the board's pleasure. I don't mind having a seat and, and watching the presentation.
Well, well, yeah. Actually, the presentation is, it's the four options that you had, but I think Dr. Phillips may want to weigh in on them later on, but we do have four options before us and your contracts are based on those, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I put this together just to kind of put my head around, you know, the, the thinking that I feel we need to do. And that is, even though we're talking only about Royal Oaks tonight, I really think that we need to think in terms of a plan for five schools. And that would include Royal Oaks, Beverly Hills, Arbrown McAllister, Coltrane Web and then the Long School, which is where we have our pre-K program. And this is just some background information that I pulled out of our Fanning Howey assessment and Tim and Vince, we got that report, I think in the middle of last year. And what they did was they looked at a lot of our facilities, but some of them we said don't even look at because we know we're going to replace them. So the ones that, that they looked at are the ones that are shown in bold here and then the ones that are in lighter ink are ones that they didn't look at because we didn't ask, we asked them not to. But you'll see that they did do an assessment of Royal Oaks, of Beverly Hills and Arbrown McAllister. And you can see the size of those schools. Royal Oaks is like 51,000 square feet. Beverly Hills is quite similar, a little under 50. Arbrown's a little bit smaller at 36,000. And then Coltrane Web is in there at 58,000. It's, it's a little bit bigger school and then the Long School, you can see was built in 1922, at least its oldest part was. Okay, we moved down. The other thing that Fanning Howey did in addition to looking at the condition of, of each of the buildings and what needs to be done to, to upgrade them. They also looked at the, what they called the educational adequacy, which was kind of, does it have all of the things that we want in a new school today? Are the rooms large enough? You know, is there a, a indoor gym? Is there a suitable media center and so on and so forth? So these are the scores that, on the elementary schools that they looked at. And so a higher score means that it's got more of the things that we would have in a brand new school. And you can see that our new schools, elementary schools score quite high. Interestingly, Beverly Hills came, came in at 75%, which is the Fanning Howey rated as good. McAllister is 67%. They rated that as good. It seems a little low to me. But what, what I found interesting was actually one of the schools that we were not even talking about, Wolf Meadow was, was lower. So we go to the next one. In looking at Beverly Hills and Arbrown McAllister, Fanning Howey looked at the cost to bring those buildings back up to spec, not, not to enlarge them. And there's a typo here, it says cumulative costs through 2014. That should say through 2024. So I looked, they, they were showing what cost would be needed each year and I went out 10 years. And if you add all that up, it turns out that for both Beverly Hills and Arbrown McAllister is, is 9.8 million is what would be needed to renovate those schools. And not only renovate, but also, as it says here, bring them up to compliance with the ADA so that there would be, so children or staff with disabilities or parents could access the facility. And at Arbrown McAllister, there was a fairly significant amount of money that they, they recommended spending to improve parking and driveways. And if you've ever been there, you know that that is a, a challenge at that school. So that brings me in the options that I looked at and, and so I made two assumptions in doing these options. At first was that long school's not worth renovating, so I didn't include that as an option. And then the second one was that if we did want to do those 9.8 million dollars of renovations at Beverly Hills or Arbrown McAllister or renovate Coltrane Web, we would have to move students out of those schools for a year because these are fairly significant renovations that would be required, so. All right, so option one that was presented last week was to build. So, all right, so option one that was presented last week was to build a, a small school at Royal Oaks with 392, size for 392 students, core capacity of 450. It's estimated that would cost 18 million. The, if we did that with what is now the K1 building, that's the newer wing, could be available for pre-K. In other words, there would be enough room in the 392 student building to house all of the K, K through five students. But the new school would not be large enough to accommodate students from other schools while they are being renovated, which means we could not do that option. And instead, we'd have to build new buildings for them. And, and I just, these are guesstimates, you know. Beverly Hills is about the same size as Royal Oaks, so I said, okay, maybe that, to replace that would be 18 million. R. Brown McAllister, I also came in at 18 million, even though it's a little bit smaller, but Everett Dirksen used to say a million here and a million there, pretty soon you're talking about real money. So, okay. Coltrane Web, I said 21 million. Again, pure estimate. And Long, you would not need a replacement of Long because we could use the existing K1 building. So if you add all that up, that's a $75 million cost. So keep that in mind. So then if we go look at option two, which was presented, that was to put a medium-sized school at Royal Oaks, and that would be size for 648 students with a core of 800. And they would keep the K1 wing. And that was estimated to cost 23 million. So what, as I see it, eventually that K1 wing could be used for the pre-K program that's currently at Long School. So that takes care of that. But what I would envision also is at first, we would use the combined facilities, which could handle up to 800 students because there's, you could put about 150 in that K1 wing, to do renovate, to move in students while we renovate Beverly Hills, R. Brown McAllister, and Coltrane Web. And so the cost of doing that, I actually added a 10% contingency to the Fanning Howey cost. So it comes in at 10.8 instead of 9.8 million for Beverly Hills and R. Brown. And for Coltrane Web, I came up with 14.3 million. How did I do that? Well, I looked back at when we were originally talking about a bond that would include several schools, and one of them was, include, was Coltrane Web. And I think we had 9 million in, to renovate that. So that was back in November 2013. We know now that the costs are a lot higher, so I increased it by 50% to come up with that $14 million. So once we did all of that, we would still have space for 300 additional students and also be able to move the pre-K program to the Royal Oaks. Now, what we do with that, don't know. Could be used for a new magnet program, or if there's overcrowding at Wyncroft, we could take students there. So that total cost of that is 59 million. So that's 16 million less than the previous one. But as I do note, I didn't calculate what it would cost to transport students while we're doing the renovations and moving materials from the other schools temporarily. But so that's option two. Option three was to go with a larger school at, at Royal Oaks. In this case, we'd build a school for 800 students with a 1,000 core, but that would include the K1 building. And that was estimated at actually a little bit less than the previous one, 22.6. So because of the size, we certainly could accommodate both the Coltrane Web students and, and then the R. Brown McAllister students while those schools are being renovated. As I see it, at that size, we'd have two options for Beverly Hills. You could either permanently merge Beverly Hills into Royal Oaks and, and renovate Beverly Hills to be used as the pre-K and perhaps for the PLC. Or you could temporarily move students into, from Beverly Hills into Royal Oaks while we renovate Beverly Hills and then return the students to, to Beverly Hills. If we do the latter, then Royal Oaks is going to have 450, space for 450 additional students. I'm, I'm not sure what we do, but obviously there's a lot of options. You could do the magnet, as we could do for option two. Maybe you put the pre-K program there, I don't know. But again, the, the cost is pretty similar to the other option two. And then the final option was to have a, a larger school, the 800 students and 1,000 student core on a new site. And I'm, I'm estimating that based on the cost of the, the current Odell, which I think is at 24 million. And that's what it's sized for. But then we also would need land. And as we heard about in closed session, that, that's some, an additional chunk of money that, that we would have to put in there. So if we did this, what we could do is in that larger school, we could initially move students temporarily from R. Brown McAllister, renovate R. Brown McAllister, then move students from Coltrane Web, renovate Coltrane Web, and then permanently move Beverly Hills to the new school. That would give, that would bring about 750 students total at this new school. It's designed for 800. So, so that would certainly be a comfortable one. Then you could renovate Beverly Hills and it could house the pre-K program that's at Long and also the, the PLC. So the total cost of that would be about $60 million plus whatever, I, I say net cost of land. So we have to buy new land, but then we're not going to be using the, the existing Royal Oaks sites. So you would probably sell that. So you know, you get a little, you net back a little bit. You can make your own judgments as to what that would be. So it's 60 million plus, you know, additional land. And I think, is that the last one? No, I've got one more. So, oh, okay, so this just summarizes the total options. So you can see option one is a 392 student-sized school at Royal Oaks. Option two, 648. Option three is 800. Option four is a new site for 800. And then you can see the approach that we would then take for Beverly Hills, for R. Brown McAllister, for Coltrane Web. Whether we would be able to accommodate a new pre-K program. And in fact, in all of them, I think we could. And then whether there would be space for a PLC. And in the first two, I don't think there would, but in the second two, if we chose to merge Beverly Hills and, and Royal Oaks, then you could put the PLC, what is now Beverly Hills. And there you can see what the, the total cost estimates are. And that scale FH cost is just a, I think that I, I took the Fanning Howey cost and increased it by 10% for contingency sake. So I think with that, I'll sit back in my regular chair and we can
Do you have to answer questions?
All right, Ms. Carpenter has keyed up.
Oh, lucky me then.
All right, David.
Yeah, let me ask you this, Jeff. On like the option for, I'm sorry, option two and option three, talk about 300 additional students and 450 additional students respectively. Now, I hear what you're saying, I understand your, your thinking in terms of building that school and then after the school is built, bringing in the other schools while their schools are renovated. But now I'm asking, are these projections of 300 and 450, after all that dust settles in the long, long term?
Right, yes. So that's
Then my question to myself is, is the economy or the, the neighborhood economy of Royal Oaks currently going to increase by 300 or 400 students five, six, seven, eight years into the future?
Right.
And that's what I don't feel comfortable about.
Right.
Am I going in the wrong direction on that?
No, no, it's a very good question that we, we need to ask. It's, I, I looked at the ORED study, which I believe it was in our packet with the 10-year plan. They updated it. And for Royal Oaks, you know, Royal Oaks is right now around 300 students, I think. It shows it growing to maybe 350, you know. It, it, this is going to take several years. You know, you got to build the building and then you got to, you know, do a renovation at Beverly Hills, renovation at R. Brown McAllister, renovation at Coltrane Web. You know, that, that's at least four years out. So I looked five or six years out, and I think it was saying it might get to 350, 344, somewhere in there. So, so that's why I said, you know, we still would have room. If we build it for 648 students, when all this is said and done, all the dust is settled, as you said, we, we'd have room for 300 additional students.
And, and what we would be doing, to me, would be almost the equivalent of urban renewal. We might be doing something good for the economy of that immediate neighborhood such that in the future, there would be more students, but it can't be kind of projected that far.
Right.
Do you follow where I'm going?
Right, right. And I mean, we know that there, there really aren't any active building sites there right now, I don't believe.
Right, and the neighborhood is very stable, the school population is very flat.
As we've seen in doing, looking for suitable land, there's not a whole lot of empty plots.
But a nice, brand-new school might be a shot in the arm for that neighborhood.
Might cause somebody to go in and, you know, say, hey, this would be a great place to put some, you know, multifamily homes or something like that. Who knows?
Okay, thanks for all your work.
Others?
I got one.
Go ahead.
Since you're into weeds with the staff now, what would your, what would your recommendation be?
What would my recommendation be? You know, when I started this, I, I was thinking option two. You know, it's, it's lower, well, I thought it was going to be lower cost, but you know, the more I'm looking at it, the option three, I think, for essentially, and I think we need to check this, I don't know, Dave, if you're the one that came up with the 22.6 billion. I think you, what you did was, you, you just said, let's assume $1.58 per square foot for everything. And the reality is that core space costs more, and so you, you, that number may not be correct.
Yeah, so it's the order of magnitude. You know, these are, these are not, these are ballpark estimates, so it's order of magnitude. It's in the neighborhood of, you know, 22, 23 million dollars. So that's really how, how you should look at that.
Okay, so to, after, look, yeah, option three looks better to me. Now, option four also has some, some merit because as I show in the summary, that's the one where we know we would have a solution for all the schools and the PLC and a, a pre-K program. The, the challenge, of course, as we found out in our closed session, is that buying additional, buying land for a new spot is, will increase the, the cost of the, of the overall project fairly significantly. So, and then I think it would also, there could be scheduled delays as we seek the land. So, yeah, while I would not pitch a fit if we picked option four, I think option three is the way I'm leaning right now.
All right, Mr. Phillips. And option two, I think, I think your option two is a little bit more inclusive than maybe the option two that, that we were going to be presented, prior to your presentation, which I like. You've got 10.8 for renovation costs of Beverly Hills and 10.8 for renovation costs of R. Brown, which renovating those buildings is seemingly an, an option or otherwise it wouldn't be included in your presentation. But yet we have 11 million that seems like maybe the renovation of our, of Royal Oaks could be done for that 11 million. I know that it wasn't included in the study, but it, you know, based on the age and kind of the building layout, maybe that should be an option as well, given your numbers there.
Yeah, now, Fanning Howey did actually come up with a, a cost to renovate Royal Oaks, and I can't remember what it was. What they didn't do was they didn't do the educational adequacy assessment. And I'm not quite sure, I think they had already completed that part of the study when we, we asked them to add in Royal Oaks to their assessment. I, I'm guessing that the educational adequacy of Royal Oaks would be probably even lower than what is shown for Wolf Meadow. So that, that's where I get, am, not inclined to say, let's renovate Royal Oaks for $11 million because I think what we would end up with is a, you know, it'd be a school that's in, in good shape, that could last many more years, but I'm not sure it would be offering the, the, the same sort of educational environment that we would be offering students that are in our newer schools that have the larger rooms. Now, the exception, of course, is the K1 wing, which has the, the larger skies.
I was just comparing it to what was in the presentation, not the newer
Right, right. No, I, I, and, and, you know, it's, it's certainly something that, that we should consider.
Those students at Beverly Hills and R. Brown, Coltrane, I mean, those are
Right. And I think what it, what it boils down to is that I, you know, in, in looking at this educational adequacy, the Beverly Hills design looks like it's, you know, as Fanning Howey says, it's good. I mean, it's not excellent. And so maybe we want to go ahead and say, well, let's replace it with a brand-new school. And, and McAllister is a little less so, but I think that the money, that putting 10.8 million into R. Brown McAllister, remembering that it's a smaller school, will give it some extras that it doesn't currently have. And so I would hope that that would bring it up to a, a, a level that's comparable to, to our other elementary schools.
Ooh, there we are. I'm on now. You know, the only thing that I worry about, you know, these smaller schools like Royal Oaks, Beverly Hills, Coltrane Web, these smaller schools have, have become like families. And, you know, when I see you saying like dissolve them, basically is when you're saying, you know, merge Royal Oaks and Beverly Hills together. It's like killing a family.
I know, that's the
Yeah, and that bothers me big time.
No, I, I, I
It really does.
It, it, it's a very legitimate concern.
And I'm not in favor of, I mean, you know, I don't want to dissolve a family. I, I, I really don't. And, you know, these smaller families, they are, they're, they're important. You've got neighborhoods here that have found the gather. And I don't like that, you know, they have, and they really do. And that's, that, that bothers me. That bothers me big time. And, and I know maybe it's not, you know, our new interim superintendent, he said he wants to think about the students and they, the students, they, when you get a smaller environment and, you know, children usually learn better in a smaller environment. Bigger is not always better. And smaller's usually better. So, you know, that's not always the best thing. So I've got some hesitance on this.
I, I, I agree, Carolyn. And that, that, you know, merge the two schools, that's the language of a dispassionate engineer. The language of a passionate school board member says, I don't want to do that. I, I do not want to ask the Beverly, the Beverly Hills community to move into a school that's on the current Royal Oaks property. If it's in a separate location where both schools are now having to come together and it's a new start for both of them, maybe, but, but I agree. And I would say just in terms of, you know, the advantages of small school, I would defer to Dr. Lauter and the professional staff to tell us, you know. What, what do you think?
I think what Ms. Carpenter is saying, that professionally, a lot of us believe, is that, to be quite honest, in Cabarrus County, our schools are probably too big. At elementary school, at middle school, high school, I think is probably more in the range of what, what we would like. But I believe in an area that is growing the way that our area is growing, the reason that we have kind of landed at some of these schools being a little bit bigger is just economically, they're, we're just going to have so many to build that you have to kind of give a little on that. And so now in Cabarrus County, I think we think an elementary school has 1,000 students. Well, a lot of places, an elementary school wouldn't be built with more than 400 kids or 500 students. I mean, that's the expectation. So I guess my answer to that is it's, it's always a compromise when we talk about how we're going to work and how we're going to do this. I think we've proven that we can make successful elementary schools that have 1,000 students in it. But if you're asking me what I think the ideal is, is considerably smaller. That's what's best for the students. But, but again, I think in our community, we have to, to take that and, and try to figure out, if we know we're going to need as many seats as we are in the next decade, because I think we're, we're going to need a lot, then what's the compromise there that we can make work, is what we're always working with. But, but again, if you're going to ask for the ideal, it's, it's smaller.
Just by my, can I challenge our interim superintendent? I, and I mean this respectfully, I, I want to work in the real world. And in the real world, my question to you is, what should we do as opposed to the ideal world? Because the county's resources are what they are. The growth of the county is, is busting at the seams in some places. It's stagnant. are. The growth of the county is busting at the seams. In some places, it's stagnant in this particular area. Whatever we would do on that site, we would have to get to some point where we redistricted to make sure that that facility was adequately populated with students and with people from a variety of neighborhoods. My question to you is, educationally, I know where you're coming from. My heart is with you. It truly is. But in the real financial material world that we have to deal with, what's the right answer?
I think the, again, with the situation where we're at, the six or the 800-seat school that we've discussed is probably, you know, on that site is what lands with what will work best. Some of that is for the reasons that have been suggested here about possibly being able to move students in and take advantage of that. The other thing that I would say is something that we really need to think about is the pre-K part that you mentioned before, if having an option. I mean, we have hundreds of students now that are on the waiting list for that. And I think if we could ideally say, what would we want? We would want more of our students to benefit from pre-K and not necessarily not be able to get in, which is what we have now. And so, to have an option on that site where we can alleviate schools that need to be renovated, and either periodically or at the end, be able to have pre-K seats is a good thing for the county, our students, and I think economically works with what's on the table.
Do I hear you advocating option two, as it's expressed here?
I think...
In broad terms, in very broad, general terms?
I think that's the one that we've come back to a lot, whenever we've talked about this, when you guys have talked about it, and when we've talked about it with our group, is that makes a lot of sense for the amount of money and what you get for it. Certainly could go to 800. I mean, there's always a discussion with that, but that's the answer that we've come to each time that we discuss it.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes. There was one other question that I brought up, or thought about, and I had asked the question and wanted to get the information, when we're talking about pre-K. And also, there's been discussions about Long. There is a modular unit that's over there right now on the site. And my question had been, if that modular unit could be moved to Royal Oaks. Now, I'm thinking, it has got 10 classrooms in it that holds 18 students in each classroom. And I wanted to know if it could be moved to that site that could hold those students there at Long. And that way, because there had been discussion at one time, to make Long warehouse space, you know, for our whole system, so we don't have to go out and buy additional warehouse space. And that way, and that would be for the Head Start children. We could have our pre-K and our Head Start all together. And so, I didn't know what, if it could be housed there, and if we could get that moved there. And that would be 10 classrooms with 18 students there, which, that would be additional students there. Now, I'm a suggestion, but I was asking.
Sure. And so, the idea is to move the facility, the building, from Long over to Royal Oaks campus, and have those same students at Long attend at Royal Oaks. So, the first thing is transportation. That's going to be a hurdle. I'm not sure that we provide transportation for the Long students.
We're not providing, the Head Start does not provide transportation. The parents have to, they stop transportation. Last year, we do not provide transportation. So, we're not providing it. So, the parents have to get them there.
Right. So, that's probably a major hurdle. And it's something that, you know, we would have to really think through. You know, how can that be accommodated? It may be that we have to provide the transportation somehow, some way. And that's not my area, so I really couldn't speak intelligently about it. But that, I think that's probably the biggest hurdle. The second thing is that, you know, that building has to follow the program. You know, there's strings attached to it from the money, you know, that, how the building came to Cabarrus County schools. So, we have to follow and be within those guidelines. We'd have to confirm what those guidelines are.
But physically, you could possibly put that modular unit on the site?
It all depends on what the program's going to be.
Right, if the strings weren't...
The larger the school, the smaller amount of space and footprint we will have available to do that. We'd also want to look, you know, how long is the building going to be there? Is it, is it something, would we have the 1998 building for pre-K and this modular building? Would the 1998 building be rolled into the new elementary school? Those are things that we'd have to work out.
I think Kelly's, what were you going to say, Kelly? You look like you had something on your mind.
I'm not sure that I was answering the question or not, but I think I heard the question was, could we move, could we move it? And as long as we're moving it, and we're going to use it for Head Start, we can certainly move it. That's fine. But we need to use it for Head Start.
Yeah, it's got to be used for that program, because that's what it was for. And I knew it. And it has to be for Head Start, because that's what it was, the federal money was for that program.
And if we decide not to use it for Head Start, then we can certainly just, we can buy the federal government out. We can just, certainly, we need a funding source, but we can buy them out and take care of that, and then use it for whatever we want to. But that is an option.
Well, I just thought, if we moved them, but I knew we wanted to possibly use that other one for warehouse space, because we need warehouse space. And if we did that, when we were talking about the pre-K, if we get everybody in the same spot, and like I say, we're not, we're not doing the transportation, and it's not that far from one location to the other, and they're already bringing their children. So, we stopped the transportation. Like I say, what, two years ago? It's been two years now?
I thought it was just a year.
Well, first year, it was five-mile radius, and then...
That's right, that's right.
It was five miles. They would do it within five miles. And then, the next year, it was none whatsoever.
That's right.
So, it's none now. So, we're not providing the transportation. And it's not that far between, not that far a distance, but then, that's, but I was just wanting to find out if we had the space, if we could put that building there. So, that was my suggestion. All right.
Mr. Walter?
Oh. Go ahead. It's a wrapping up. Okay. Well, Jeff, I do appreciate you actually taking, you taking the time to put the thoughts down here and kind of break this out, so we can follow your thought process. I think something that needs to play a role here is where the districts are now. Can we possibly bring up the elementary school districts on a map somewhere, so we can look at that on screen? I'm sure we've got it on our website somewhere. It's on our school website, I'm sure. Can you take off the red lettering? And zoom out just a little bit, please. Okay. You know, as we're talking, any move that we make affects every other school that's either surrounding or near it. And one of the concerns I have for a larger school in that location is where the student's going to come from. I mean, already, to fill Royal Oaks as it is, if you look there where it says Royal Oaks, all those students are coming from the other side of 85. That is nowhere close to where Royal Oaks is currently. That's a long bus ride that those kids are taking, just to fill the 300, and what is it, 20 students that we have now there. If we make 600 students at the far end of the county, that is a concern on how to fill that. And I understand the thoughts about the flex space and to moving students. But I also wouldn't support combining two schools at that site. That doesn't, that would be a difficult decision for all those families that are in the one, moving over to the other site. The other issue, concern I have is folks that, you know, if we build a brand-new school there, taxpayers pay for that. Yet, the folks that live on the other side of the street, that can throw a rock to the school, wouldn't be able to go to it. That can walk to that school. That doesn't, that's not right to me. There's got to be something that should be done for that, if this ends up being built at that site. But my main concern here is cost, you know, we have an $11 million bond. We have, you know, as Jeff was going, talking about renovating these other schools, right about $11 million. Though, I think the, Fannie Howie said something about $6 million. We had that discussion with Chuck last, last week. I think it wasn't really comparable. These are actually a lot larger numbers. Is that correct? Is that our discussion, that this 10.8 is really significantly more than that? And there's a lot of needs in this county to be able to fund. And this is a good plan, a good thought process. But not only do we have to deal with that, we have to deal with renovations of the school roofs and all this other stuff that we need to, plus, we have this, you know, it's been in the paper, and this 10-year plan. We have incredible growth coming to our county. This project doesn't really handle growth. It doesn't address that. We have, you know, $4 million in a budget to possibly look for a site, an alternate site for the school, which I think is something we really need to look into, is alternate site, I guess, four. Or, you know, go with an option five, which is, what can we do with the $11 million? Can we renovate it up to an adequate facility? My problem with renovating Beverly Hills is it's the same thing as Coltrum Web. Coltrum Web, those are completely inadequate classroom spaces. They're tiny. I don't know how you can renovate those to make them large. That school, they don't have athletic fields like these other schools. Having a school, if we're going to do it, the school at a different site, you could maybe provide some of that, those options, to make it adequate and comparable. But the other, I mean, the concern here is we have the growth to deal with. We have, you know, in five years, we have a middle school that we predict to be 133% over capacity. If we, again, put our resources over here, this isn't a middle school, where, how are we going to, we've got to fund that, too. I think we need to either consider, you know, like we did prior to, is making a bond request to address a lot of these needs. But I don't think we can just do a small, because again, by the time you build this school, there's no funding left to do any of the other renovations or anything else for these other schools that desperately need it as well. So, that's where my concern is. I think our best option would be at option four at a different site, because here, you're going, if it's costing its $20 million to replace one school, or 21 to 23, and 23 to replace another, that's $43 million. If you're just combining one, you're talking less than 20, 25 million. And then, you've solved, you've renovated two schools, or you've replaced two schools. You know, again, it's, these are big, these are not easy decisions to make, because they do affect all these families. We're going to have to redistrict anyway when we get there. But if we do something with the Beverly Hills, we're all, we're talking about how important pre-K is. Well, that location of that school is perfect to move the Long school over there. It gives you 400 spaces for children. It's not a big transportation issue to go all the way up into Kannapolis to use a Royal Oaks facility. So, I don't know, these are, again, we've got big decisions to talk about or to make here, and none of them are easy. But we want to make sure that we can address everybody's needs and not just focus on one area. And that school does need work. It needs, those classrooms are inadequate. Those classrooms need to be fixed. But I think that you're saying the K-1 wing does, is an adequate size. So, if we could put something similar to that, even if it's, I don't know, again, that's an architect's conversation. Thanks.
I agree with everything Rob said. And to that end, I honestly would like to make decisions of this magnitude with our new superintendent and new executive director of facilities, giving them more than one day and two weeks on the job. I would honestly feel much more comfortable with them being able to kind of weigh in in the new capacities. I know that Chris has been with us, but maybe not involved in some of these discussions. So, you know, I would, I for one would like to wait until May to make this decision. And I don't know that one month is going to make that much of a difference in a timeline, given all of these schools that we're impacting, all of these students and families. I just feel like allowing them a little bit more time to kind of get their feet on the ground, and being able to come in and, you know, weigh in heavily, heavily in these discussions would, I think, be helpful.
Well, one of the things, it seems like, oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting very frustrated.
Don't get frustrated.
And why I'm getting frustrated is, it seems like some people don't understand what a bond issue is. And when the people vote for a bond issue, and they voted on one bond issue, they voted on Royal Oaks. The people went out, they cast their ballot, and they voted for one school, one school. They didn't vote for Beverly Hills. They didn't vote for R. Brown-McAllister. They didn't vote for anything else. They cast their vote. They said, we want to replace Royal Oaks. That's what they said. They approved that bond. That's what they put on the ballot. That's what they said to this board they wanted to do. Yes, we have the problems of all this other stuff, but that's what the people said, and that's what they gave the responsibility of this board to do. And it has been, it has been at least eight, going on longer than that it's supposed to be done. Now, everybody's doing, the majority of this board's doing a tap dance to, you know, put it off some more. Well, I'm not tap dancing. It needs to be done. It needs to be voted on. We've got to get the information to the board of commissioners to get it done. And, you know, we need to make a decision on it. Now, the people, and this got more votes than the RCC vote, that they said they wanted it done. It's got, it got more votes than that to say they wanted it done.
Which option would you choose, Ms. Carpenter?
I would, I would go with the recommendation. I would go with option two. I could go with two or three, but I would go with two, on the site and get it done. I would, I would do that. And so, I would say, I would make a motion. I'd make a motion, redo it, and get it done.
And I would second her motion.
Making a motion?
I am.
That item number two, or option two?
Option two.
On the same side, and David seconded that motion.
Just for clarification, that really, if I understand it, Dave, is item one on your agenda description? It says, same site, 648 student program, basic services, plus optional additional services?
800 core.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to say 800 core, right?
Right.
So, in your request for design services, does this, what you have listed as one, that's really the option two that I had?
It is. And really, the reason for the difference was, this was done, actually, at the, after the March Board of Education meeting, we came up with these scenarios.
Right.
Construction committee was later, and it was a different set of items.
Right.
So, is your motion for option two, or?
Her, actually, she's, from the work session, she is picking the option two that we all went through in the work session. So, if you were to go back last week's... So if you were to go back, last week's meeting, that was the option. Option two was a core of 800 and 642, or something of that nature.
Yeah, it was on his.
On the same site.
On the same side.
And retaining the pre-K or the 1998 structure. Okay? So I have, I have a motion for that, and David Harrison has seconded that motion. So Carolyn?
Does this funding come from us if we approve this motion? Do we just take it from unassigned fund balance? Or is that?
No, this, this is.
So we need to put some contingencies on this motion?
No, we're not, we're not, we're talking about just the option for the, where the school is, so Dave can begin the design of the program. Then we'll get into this particular approval of the contract, which is a secondary portion of this. Actually, we have to first approve a site, and we haven't done that at this point.
See, the commissioner's made the sign, and this is the whole thing, get it moved.
All right, so the motion is, is, I'm going to go back to last week's board, board docs, so I can formally.
Just in the moment, while you're looking that up, Mr. Chairman, I know we've talked about transportation and roads and developing ingress and egress into that area. That would have to be factored into the current road structure and configuration of the streets to get into and out of that, that neighborhood with essentially doubling the.
We can have that discussion once we go into the discussion phase of this. Let me just get this motion cleaned up here. Pardon? Yep, I was just. Yep, that's, there it is. So the motion is to rebuild Royal Oaks for 650 students with a design capacity or program capacity. Are those the same words?
That works.
Okay. Of 648, a core capacity of 800. We're not going to worry about the square footage, but, and it will be built on the exact same site. All right. Carolyn Carpenter has made the first, has made that motion, David Harrison has seconded it. Now, we'll go back into discussion, and before anyone else talks, I'd like to speak. So I'm going to take some liberty here. Dr. Phillips, I appreciate you spending time just to get us engaged in this conversation, and I appreciate the fact that you laid out for us some options for thinking into the future. Future, we're going to have to serialize and figure a way to deal with our intercity schools and their renovations. But folks, last week, if you remember, we had a redistricting discussion. And during that redistricting discussion, we talked about Boger, and at that point, we said Boger was going to go down to about 60% after we did redistricting. But unbeknownst to us, all of a sudden, we discovered that Boger had the potential within the next two years to have 500 additional students, which puts them over 100% capacity. My friends, I live on Kannapolis Parkway. I know what's going on there. There's thousands of acres that have not even begun to be tapped. The city of Kannapolis is in the process of building a four-lane road on Highway 3 going into the back end of the city on the west side. Once that highway is in place, and they'll begin construction later this year on that highway, they're starting to purchase land as we speak, once that highway is complete, there will be a four-lane highway from Highway 85, or from Interstate 85, all the way into the back of Kannapolis. You just take a right-hand turn on the Highway 3 and go into the back. That's going to open up all those thousands of acres that are back there, and there's already sewer and water and gas. All of that's already in place, and there'll just be more of it. So Boger hasn't even begun to grow yet. It won't be like Harrisburg, but Boger is going to grow. We will need a large, another large school in that area in the next five to six years, easily. And so we'll have to have a place to move students around, because Wyancourt's going to be, it's nearly overflowing as it is. Boger soon could be overflowing within the next couple of years, because a lot of multifamily are popping up around the Afton Ridge area. And then we have, Kells Water is now revamping and, and growing, and then we have all the untapped acreage that hasn't even begun and probably will begin shortly. So regardless of which direction we go, the school will get filled very quickly, because there is a lot of opportunity out there, and I could see us having to, even if we don't build this big enough, having to come back in another 10 years to revisit another elementary school on that side of, on our side of the county in the northwest area. So I don't think we can make a wrong decision. The other part of it is, we're going to have to do redistricting, and we're going to have to think about how we, how we do the constructibility of this school, and, and those things will, will come out in the design phase of this, of this particular project. I appreciate what Vince is saying about putting Mr. Lauter on the spot and making him have a, make a commitment and putting, oh, gosh, we got two Lauters. Oh, my gosh. Did I see double? Mr. Lauter and Mr. Lauter, or Dr. Lauter and Mr. Lauter. But, you know, I understand that, but I think that Tim has lived in this area long enough, and he's a quick study, and he understands the pressures that we're under and, and understands the growth patterns. Dr. Lauter's been involved with this process. He was involved intimately with the 10-year capital plan and understands the student allocation and knows that we're, we're going to need to have something over at Royal Oaks. So I believe the option that we have before us is, is a good option, and, and I'm willing to support that. So I will now open it up to the rest of the board to have their time. Any other discussion on option two or on the motion at hand?
My only comment earlier was to bake in adequate planning for roads and transportation into the current Royal Oaks site as we proceed with plans to, in effect, double the size of it.
Yeah, and I think that part of our conversation will be with the city, city manager of Kannapolis and the facilities director over there to make sure that they're on board with us. So there have been discussions, the fact that we're talking about Royal Oaks. So they're, they're aware that it's on the map and that there are possibilities. They don't know where, but they just know that, that we're talking about it, and that we'll need their assistance as we go down the road. All right. Any other discussion items?
Mr. Walter?
Comments? You know, again, I don't think a large school at that location is the right decision. I think a smaller school at that location we can live with. I think we're going to have unintended consequences by putting a large school there and the effects that the redistricting will have on that, on that student population, the population of the school. The other thing is, you know, for me, as a voter, it was $11 million that was put on that bond. It wasn't $23 million, so that's, I think, what the voters understood, was an $11 million project. Granted, it was obviously going to cost more than that to put, to replace a school there, but I think that played a role in that, the voting for that project.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. All right. Are there any other comments on this? If not, then it's time for us to vote. So show your, show your hands, and all in favor of this motion, raise your hands. All right, all opposed, raise your hands. Two, so we have a five to two vote, Ms. Monroe. So we will be going with option two, rebuild Royal Oaks for 650 students with a program slash design capacity of 648 and a core capacity of 800. All right. Now, that enters us into this next portion, which is really what 9.3 is about, and that is the contract. Mr. Burnett, would you kindly help us understand the dollar amounts and what they actually, actually represent? And, and now we've narrowed it down to number one, but what, really, what does all, what do these dollars mean?
Okay. So number one, it's the same site, 648 student program. It says, "Basic services," which was at 3.75% of the expected construction cost. Then there were select optional additional services, sustainable design, which, as you recall with Odell, we had some sustainable design features, which we did want to pursue, and that would be in keeping with the current standards and county standards. We've got energy modeling, which is one that, it's a $6,000 item. We do hope that that would get approved. It is a small amount of money, where we do think we would get many times that back in return, and Duke Energy incentives. We did look at applying for Duke Energy incentives on Odell, and in some cases, we will, but we also knew and recognized that there were many other opportunities we had with the Duke Energy incentives. But the, the application process was a difficult one. It's one that really needed the engineering help, you know, on that. And so this is an effort to engage the architectural team in the application process, the submittal process, and with the contract, with the contractor, as far as requiring the information that, that Duke Energy's going to require on the, on the application process. So again, it's a $6,000 fee, and we think that we will get return on investment, you know, many times that. Dakota Street improvements, we are anticipating some improvements, not much, and that is widening the street to, if you look to the west of the site, you'll see where there already are a road widening, curb and gutter sidewalk. So it would be to design those improvements. Demolition services, that would be where we would be having the construction administration and design services for the demolition. We did that at Odell, and that we're proposing to do the same thing. A detailed professional cost estimate at 65% at construction documents phase. Again, we all know that the price of construction work is increasing, it's increasing rapidly. What is it going to be a year from now? We've seen estimates, a range of estimates, it's from 4% to 5% to over 10%. Which one is it going to be? We don't know, but that's a big difference. What we're hoping is that we'd be able to, at 65%, do a detailed construction estimate, which is at $24,000, by the way. And then we would be able to use that to inform the county that this is what, that looks like the project is coming in. So there's time to react to it, make whatever kind of adjustments on their end, if need be, and if willing, and if they can't do it, then we'll make the adjustments on our end. So it's a, it gives us a good heads up as to where we are at that time, and that we think it's a worthwhile cost. And that was it.
All right, Dr. Phillips?
So in this list where it says Dakota Street improvements and demolition services, they're not actually going to be implementing those services, they're just going to do the.
The design.
The design work to support.
Design and construction administration.
Right, okay.
Any other comments on, Mr. Walter?
Kelly, can you come back up? Okay, in our budget here, we have item, what is it, 13, that says $4 million?
Yes.
So based on our decision here, should that change?
That's just our request, and so what we're talking about tonight is, we're going to need to make a, a separate request if you want to move forward with this before.
So this is separate prior to the budget?
Yes.
So this is an extra $1 million we want now?
You're going to have to make a decision. We're going to ask for that $4 million as part of our budget process. We won't know that until the last of June.
But that still won't get us to the 17.
You're right, exactly.
So should that be more than the $4 million?
We can't wait on their budget process for his.
Right, I understand you're asking now for, for $1 million, but should this $4 million in our, our request be increased?
I would say it's separate.
So we're going to continue to ask for separately from this project, although we have a $4 million item?
So we believe we could reduce the $4 million for this, the request that we're going to ask for.
So the project will be what, 11 plus? I'm confused now.
So the total project cost is going to be, you know, well over, you know, $1, $3, or $4 million. It's going to be in the neighborhood of $23 million.
So it's significantly more than the four?
Yes.
So what are we asking for the four for? Why are we asking for four then?
The $4 million, our, let me, Kelly, I can answer the question.
Thanks.
In the, in the capital plan, we put $4 million as a placeholder, remember Vince, to look for property, and that's what that.
Right, now that we're not looking for property.
Boy, no, no, we still have to do that. It's a parallel path. We've asked for $4 million to begin looking at, we've got to do something about.
Right, there is another $4 million item for that, but this is a $4 million item specific to Royal Oaks.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's to do the bid process?
That was for finding another site. We've now made a decision, we're not going to go to a different site. We have this $4 million request in the budget.
Oh, okay.
And my question is, should that be increased or removed?
We're going to need a significant amount of money, more than $4 million.
Right.
So either way that you look at it, we're going to need 20, what?
23.
$23 million. So identifying the, the timing in which we need it is all going to depend on the, the progress of this board. So I think we can tie down the timing as we go forward, and by the time we, the commissioners vote on that budget, we can probably have them a better sense of, of timing when we need that, that money. But at the time that we were presenting that particular budget request was back in January.
Okay, we just voted on it today.
That's, that's correct.
Do we want to change it, or we're just going to leave it alone, or is that?
I think it's, it's fine for right now, because ultimately, we're going to need 23x million dollars.
And a separate ask. Okay, well, I'm confused on that, but all right. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? All right.
When is our drop-dead date? You know, they were needing information for the bond money. When is our date that we have to have everything into them for that bond money?
March 2016.
16, okay, that we've got to have everything in for them, okay.
And so everything means we have to have the design complete, we need to have an estimate, and then we have to go out for bid. And then we have to have the bids in hand to present to the commissioners, so then they can make a decision, which I guess you'll have to build something into your bid document to give us, give them enough time to do whatever they're going to do with their decision.
That's right. We anticipate that we would receive the bids in either, in the January, February timeframe. That way, it would go through this board cycle, board meeting cycle, approval cycle. Everything would have to be contingent upon your receipt of funding from the county, just, just like this architect contract, it needs to be contingent upon receipt of funding from the county.
So when we approve this motion tonight, then we will have to get on their agenda for May to present this particular item, requesting a not-to-exceed of $950,500, so that we would have that allocated off to the side, so we could begin the process to begin our negotiations with the architect to find out what the real fee is going to be.
And maybe we could just, at that point, at the point that the county approves or disapproves the, the amount in May, then we could adjust the budget request for that time, if that would make you feel better about that, that budget request.
I think that would, yeah. Otherwise, you just have a $4 million thing sitting out here that doesn't get you anywhere.
I got one question for you, Kelly. How many schools have been built on your watch down here?
Quite a few.
Five, six, seven?
Yeah, somewhere around in there, quite a few.
All right, board members, I'm looking for a motion to recommend option one on the contracts, which is the same site, 648 student program. It's going to have, with all the components that Dave noted, and it's going to have a not-to-exceed value of $950,500. Is there a motion?
So moved.
David Harrison makes the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Jeff Phillips seconds that. Any more discussion on this particular motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so that motion carries 7-0, and we will now be carrying this up to the commissioners in the May meeting. All right. We're getting close. And we'll be out of here by nine o'clock, right? All right, I'm going to call for a motion to convene and close session pursuant to the general statute 143-318.11A. General Statute 143-318.11A 3 to consult with an attorney, General Statute 143-318.11A 5 to establish and instruct the public body staff, General Statute 143-318.11A 6 to consider qualifications, competence, performance, et cetera, General Statute 115C-319 through 321. Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now in closed session.